Good afternoon. I want to commence our meeting today by acknowledging that the town of Olds is on the traditional treaty of the people of Treaty Seven region of Alberta, which includes the Blackfoot Confederation, the Six Sica, the Picani, the Kynai First Nations, as well as the Sutina First Nation and the Stony Nakota, the Chinookie, Bear's Paw, and Wesley First Nations. This area is also home to the Meti Nation of Alberta Region Three, and we are all treaty people. Recently, we learned of the discovery of the remains of 215 children at the former residential school site in Kamloops, B.C. What a heartbreaking event that has. Our hearts go out to the survivors, families, and communities impacted by this situation, and the dark legacy of residential schools across our country and right here in our own province. We would also like to take a moment to recognize the tragic loss of the family in London, Ontario last week. This was a racially motivated targeted attack on members of the Muslim community, sorry. The events, these events over the last few weeks have brought to the foreground the responsibility we all have to combat racism and other forms of discrimination in our communities across the nation. We recognize that our community too has a lot of work to ensure that all residents and visitors enjoy the sense of belonging, feeling safe, and being who they are and can honestly say Olds, Alberta is a town where diversity is celebrated and adds to the social and economic vibrance of our community. Back on May 25th of this year, council moved to endorse the declaration to join the Canadian Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities as a commitment to fostering a welcoming and inclusive community. And we look forward to sharing more about what that will look like and entail for our community in the coming weeks. So it's with a heavy heart that we recognize these two events. So with that in mind, I will call today's meeting to order and ask if there are any added items for our agenda today. Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion to adopt today's agenda. Councillor Ryan?
Thank you, your worship. I move that we adopt the agenda for Monday, for regular council meeting from Monday, June 14th at 1 o'clock as-
Excellent questions, comments, concerns on the agenda. Seeing none, I'll call for the votes, all in favor and opposed. That motion is carried. All right, may I have a motion to adopt the previous minutes, please? Councillor Blatts?
Thank you, worship. I move that we adopt the minutes from the regular council meeting from May 25th, 2020, 2021 as presented.
Thank you. Comments, questions, errors, omissions? Yes, Councillor Ryan?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to point out under reports, page, I believe it's seven of the agenda package, the area that it talks about with regards to the library board using different numbers for the population numbers, I want to make sure that we note that it was the Parkland Regional Library Board and that they're using those numbers for 2022, not for 2021.
Captured. Thank you very much. Councillor Blatts?
Thank you, worship. On page seven, I happened to notice under our annexation, it was moved by councillor Overwater that the meeting reconvene at, to the regular council meeting at, and there's no time. And that's probably just a major minor housekeeping item, but I believe we should possibly have the time in there.
Very good catch there. I will work with the legislative clerk to get that done before we sign off on them.
I assume it'd be 1:55, but-
Yeah, it looks like it, but we'll double check our notes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Any other questions, errors, omissions? Seeing none, then councillor Blatts, you'll amend your motion to adopt as amended?
Still moved, yeah.
Thank you. Then I'll call for the votes, all in favor and opposed. That motion carries. Excellent. Let's move along to presentations and delegations. Item 3A, Emergency Management Agency, CAO.
Thank you, your worship, and I'll ask Jennifer Blatts to give a verbal presentation in regards to COVID-19 where we're at with the ICP, and with that, Jennifer, the stage is yours.
Thank you very much. So today we would like to inform or request that we would like to deactivate the ICP after this meeting officially with the province. Our ICP has had three rounds, March 16th to March 30th, 2020, December 1st to March 2nd, 2020 and 21. And we reactivated April 1st because of the third wave, and we think we can monitor with our regular emergency management team without having the ICP activated. So during that time, we've had 63 operational periods. So it's been quite busy, but like everybody, we're fairly relieved that COVID is starting to make a lot of progress and doesn't deserve the attention that it's been getting with staff resources and, and everybody's participation with health measures. We're basing this decision, our current stats for Olds are four, Mountain View is five. We entered stage two on June 10th quite smoothly with more town facilities reopening. We're anticipating step three, the end of June or July, based on vaccination numbers. Our stats of, as of June 2nd, in the province, 68.7% had a first dose, and in Olds, we were at 54.6, which for a rural area is quite high. Second doses in the province was 20.2, and in Olds, second doses is 19%, so we're quite in line with the province there. Hospitalization and ICU numbers remain fairly low with 272 in hospital and 75 in ICU, so we're hoping with the Lotto and just people learning more about vaccinations that we'll hit that stage three. So with that, we would like to deactivate the ICP and, and get on to more normal activities.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mrs. Blatts. May I start with a motion to accept the report as information, and if there's questions, we can go from there. Councillor Bennett?
Thank you, worship. I move that council accept the emergency management's verbal update on COVID-19 as information.
Excellent. Do you have a comment or a question or anybody? Seeing none, oh well, there we go. Councillor Ryan?
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to see if we could get an update from acting director La Rock. And what's the situation with them all now that we're in-
You went mute.
A couple of times and then went mute, so.
Sorry. I just wanted to see if we could get an update on our town facilities, where they all are now that we've moved into stage two?
The pool is operational and running with the restrictions, the COVID restrictions that the government has outlined at this time. The arena has lacrosse running in it. They started on Friday, and the ball diamonds and everything are full force right now with the restrictions in place that the government has outlined, of course.
Excellent. Thank you.
Welcome.
I noticed that our splash park has been very, very popular over the last little bit. And it's good to see the families out there and enjoying the summer, summer type weather. And just want to pass along a huge thank you to Mrs. Blatts and, and the whole emergency management team that has done incredible work for our town over this past little while. I can't say that I'm not happy that you're shutting down, but that, that comes with sort of that light at the end of the tunnel that it looks like we're going to be clear of this, this situation quite soon. So thank you, Mrs. Blatts, and, and your entire team and all of the staff. The town of Olds has been phenomenal throughout this whole process. And everybody stepped up to the plate and done what was necessary to take care of business, and I think this town has run incredibly smoothly through this time, much more so than, than maybe other communities, so. And with that in mind, councillor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. This goes to Director La Rock. When you say the ball diamonds are up and running, what really does that mean? Like, are they being rented out for league play? You know, that's kind of what we want to get the Rotary Park up and running to, is to get some good, you know, baseball games going on out there, or is it still just family, or what do you mean exactly by up and running?
Right now, they're being rented out. The outdoor restriction is 10. So they're being rented out to groups of 10, and they're doing a lot of drills and, and practices. And then as of, I believe it's July 1st, when we move into stage three, they'll be in full force playing league games and competition and everything else beyond.
Councillor?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. So I guess I'm a little confused with the HHS regulations. I mean, they're allowing, I don't know, 150 for festivals, which, let's face it, we all know people gather in festivals, and so how can they only have 10 at a baseball game when you're allowed, when HHS is allowing 150 at a festival? I don't, I don't understand that. Can you maybe help me understand that?
Or would that be a question for Mrs. Blatts?
I don't know who it's for, but-
Probably.
So my understanding with stage two is youth and adult sport can resume without restrictions or active, or indoor and outdoor. So maybe there's just a bit of catching up to do to get to that, that spot, but stage two did state that. So, you know, outdoor public gatherings, it's up to 150 for concerts and festivals. Youth activities can resume without restrictions, and then youth and adult sports resume without restrictions, so I believe that that is allowed.
Okay, sorry, I'm, I'm still confused. I'm sorry if I'm, you know, taking up too much time here, but I, I need some clarity. So you're saying youth and adult is allowed-
Yeah, two weeks after 60%. So it started in June, June 2nd, so it should be very shortly if it's not already quite there yet.
That they should be able to have a full baseball game going on is what we're thinking that means? Is that what we're thinking that means?
That's what I'm thinking that means.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Talking to a lot more other facilities and, and you know, how to make that happen. So I'm, Ms. La Rock can definitely speak to that. I'm just looking at the stage two requirements.
Okay, I, I think I got the clarity I need. Thank you, Ms. Blatts.
Excellent.
I should say just one thing to our next steps, as I think you know, but the public wouldn't know, is we are doing an after-action report. There's tons of learnings on our response and COVID in general. So we've been working on this after-action report all the way along, doing different polls and surveys, and we are finalizing that report, and we'll bring it back to council. Lots of lessons learned.
Thank you, Ms. Blatts. I appreciate that.
And that's working with the Alberta Emergency Management?
You bet.
Excellent. Yeah, no, that's, that's awesome. You're doing that and through, through things like this, it's, that's the biggest thing, what we've learned and how we can improve for something else that may come down. The pipe. Excellent.
Yeah, and out of 100 and zillion different public health changes and measures, and it's been hard to stay on top of everything because it changes and changes quickly, so just, I know it wasn't perfect, but we did the best we could with the resources we had.
Well, I think you guys did a great job, and, and I, as a councillor, and I'm sure I can speak to the rest of the councillors, that we all appreciate everything that you guys have did to keep us in check and in order under HHS regulations, so thank you.
And the entire community safe. All right, so we have a motion on the table to accept. Oh, councillor Harper?
Thank you very much, your worship. Just for clarification, after we pass this motion accepting the verbal report, there'll be another motion that is required, and I'm asked, will be asking this question, so will we be standing down the emergency management team as well? At the same time?
And actually, I don't believe you need a motion to deactivate the ICP. We just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any issues with council before we, we do. And then the emergency management team, so the DDEM's directors will stay apprised of this and CAO, and continue to monitor in case more actions needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Merritt?
Yes, thanks, Jennifer, for that clarification. There is no need for a motion from council to deactivate our ICP. It's part of our bylaw, and it was more for information purposes, as Jennifer said, just in case there was other questions or other situations could arise.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion on the table to accept for information. Unless there's anything else, I'll call the vote. All in favor and opposed. That motion carries. Excellent. That takes us along to item four, business arising out of minutes or unfinished business? Does anybody have unfinished business? All right, seeing none, we'll move along to five bylaws. CAO, 5A is bylaw 2021-14, tax penalty amendment by law.
Yes, on May 25th, council basically gave us the go-ahead to deal with this bylaw, and obviously, we had to bring it back to council to get approval for it, so we do need for your approval of this, and Sheena, if you have anything to add, please do.
I'll just add that this is a bylaw just to remove the July 1st penalty on current taxes outstanding, and it is only for 2021. The next penalty date will be September 1st.
So this gives us a deferral on property taxes effectively until September 1st?
Effectively. We, we haven't changed the due date, so it is still June 30th, but there will be no penalty on July 1st for non-payment.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, let's start with the first reading motion, councillor Harper, and then if there are any questions or so forth, we can go from there.
All right, so move that the tax penalty amending by law 2021-14 be given first reading, and I do have a question.
Very good.
Okay, so just through you to Director Linderman, could you please tell me the number of properties or the percentage of properties that are currently on the tax plan? And the number of properties that waited until September last year to pay their taxes?
I do not have that off the top of my head right now, but I can definitely get that hopefully for the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
All right, councillor Blatts, did you have your hand up for a question, or? Nope, anybody else?
No, your worship. Sheena actually clarified that for me because I wanted to know when the next penalty would be incurred because there was no date given here, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
On the RF, you're correct. Thank you. Any other questions, councillor Ryan?
Yes, thank you. I know that Director Linderman said September, but I couldn't, I didn't write down the, what was it, the 1st or for the next tax penalty or the 30th?
September 1st.
Thank you.
And that is for current taxes, but we do do arrears is monthly, so this doesn't include arrears. This is only for 2021 taxes not paid.
Right, understood. Thank you.
Perfect. All right. Any further questions before we go to a vote on the first reading? Seeing none, then we will do just that. All in favor and opposed. That motion carries. All right, may I have a motion for second reading, please? Councillor Thompson?
Yes, your worship, I would move that tax penalty amending by law 2021-14 be given second reading.
Excellent. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for the votes. All in favor and then opposed. That motion carries. Alrighty, we need a motion for unanimous consent. Councillor Bennett?
Thank you, worship. I move that council give unanimous consent for presentation of the third reading of tax penalty. You'll leave the rest to the next person.
You have to finish with-
No, I'll finish that one. Okay. Amending by law 2021-14 and-
Mrs. Blatts, your mute is not on. There we go. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fox, for taking that. All right, so we have a motion on the table for unanimous consent to run the third reading. Any questions, comments, concerns on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call the votes. All in favor and opposed. That motion carries by unanimous consent, so that means we can move on to third reading. May I have a motion there? Councillor Blatts?
Thank you, worship. I move the tax penalty amending by law 2021-14 be given third and final reading.
Excellent. Final questions, comments, concerns? I think this one's pretty straightforward and obviously in the best interest of all of our residents. Then I will call for the votes. All in favor and then opposed. That motion carries. Excellent. Thank you very much, everybody. That went very smoothly. Let's move along to item six, new business. 6A, council special meeting for June 25th. Mr. Merritt?
Thank you, worship. The Broadband Investment Committee wishes to report to council on the 25th in regards to their report and recommendations. So there is a need for a special council meeting for the 25th to have this dealt with.
May I start with a motion, please, and then we can go from there. Councillor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. Yes, I move that council call a special closed council meeting for Friday, June 25th, 2021 at 8:00 a.m. to be held virtually through Zoom meetings to receive and review the recommendations of the Broadband Investment Committee.
Comment, question? Concerns? Seeing none, I will call for the votes. All in favor and opposed. That motion carries. Excellent. Let's move right along to item 6B, budget adjustments. CAO?
Thank you, worship. The July 7 PNP, this item came up for discussion, and council asked us to return with a budget adjustment for the community peace officer vehicle, and I'll ask Director Linderman to speak to this.
Thank you. So as Mr. Merritt said, this came on June 7th. It is a request, request to increase the 2021 capital budget in order, order to purchase used municipal enforcement patrol vehicle from another municipality. The cost of the vehicle is $40,000 plus an additional $3,000 is needed for some retrofits. It is proposed that this vehicle will be funded from the asset replacement reserve and from the sale of the existing vehicle. And I would open it to questions.
You very much. May I start with a motion, please? Councillor Ryan?
Thank you, worship. I move that council approves the adjustment to the 2021 approved capital budget in the amount of $43,000 for a total 2021 capital budget of 12,942,915 as per-
919, sorry.
919, sorry.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, just for the public to notice, well, we do have councillor Ryan. We did have a fulsome discussion at PNP with regards to this item, so if you don't see a whole bunch of debate here today, it's because most of the questions and and concerns were answered at that point in time. Councillor Ryan, did you have anything else to add before we vote?
I just wanted to comment in the fact that, you know, we're getting, you know, I've been always a proponent of trying to get used vehicles instead of brandy, brand new, and this is a great opportunity to get a vehicle that has hardly been used, and it'll serve us for well for several years at a fairly decent price, probably above half, close to half of what it would have cost if we bought brand new, so I think this is a good deal for, for the town to, to take up as an opportunity.
Excellent. Very well said. I, I fully agree with you on that one. All right, any other questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, then I will call for the votes. All in favor and then opposed. That motion carries. Excellent. Let's keep moving right along to item 6C, council policy 103C, terms of reference. CAO?
Thank you, worship. Policy 103C was discussed at the Policy and Priorities Committee meeting of June the 7th. There were no suggested changes to this, so we're bringing forth for approval of council. Two other policies in the code of conduct, I did have adjustments to be made to it, and those will be brought back to the June 28th council meeting for discussion and approval at that time. But this one basically was, there was no direction to make any adjustments to 103C.
Excellent. Thank you very much. May I start with a motion, and we can go from there. Councillor Bennett?
Thank you, worship. I move that council approve policy 103C, terms of reference as presented.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for the votes. All in favor and opposed. Motion is carried. All right. Let's keep moving along. We have, usually we have reports from council boards and committees at the end of the month, so unless somebody feels strongly they want to present today, we can move that to the end of the month. Seeing nobody, we'll move right along to correspondence and information. Item 9A, CAO?
Thank you, your worship. There were eight pieces of correspondence to mayor and council over the past, from the last meeting. The first one is in regards to Minister of Municipal Affairs indicating what our municipal sustainability initiative allocations would be. There were no surprises there that have been pretty much told to us during their budget deliberations earlier this year. The next two were our notes of thank you for contributions the town made to Brandon Poone and to the Veterans Association. Olds. The next, about E, E, and H are all concerning the RCMP and support for the RCMP as opposed to go into a provincial policing organization, these three communities of Marathon, Milo, and Smokey Lake have all indicated they're supporting staying with the current situation. And then F and G correspondence are on Bill C21, and just to remind people, Bill C21 is an approach to basically have municipalities have responsibility for banning firearms into the future. This has obviously not been passed at this point in time. And there has been a number of concerns raised by a number of municipal associations that this is a downloading on municipalities, and that's what these two pieces of correspondence indicate, one from Shannon Stubbs, the MP for Lakeland, and the municipality of Kingsville, Ontario basically has spoken and passed a resolution stating the same thing in regards to this correspondence.
Thank you very much, Mr. Merritt. May I have a motion to accept for information? Councillor Blatts?
Thank you, worship. I'll just get back to that page, so I make sure I do the proper wording. Pardon me, I'm all butter fingers here. I move that the correspondence and information report ending June 14th, 2021 be received for information.
Anybody with questions or comments? Councillor Harper?
Thank you very much, your worship. In reference to the thank you note from the Veterans Food Bank Association, was this donation for what? Could you just provide a little bit of background? I didn't realize that we had a veterans food bank in Olds, Alberta.
Councillor, I'll have to get back to you in regards to the specifics of this, but I'll report back to you on this.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. All right. Any further questions? Excellent. All right. Any further questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I will call for the votes. All in favor and opposed. That motion is carried. All right, that moves us right along to a closed session. Uh, I would take a motion to go closed. For councillor Overwater.
Thank you, worship. Yes, um, you'll have to tell me who you all want there. However, um, yes, I move we go into a closed session at 1:31. And in attendance will be all of council, I'm assuming the mayor, or you're part of the council, the Mr. Merritt, uh, CAO. Um, who else would you like there, Mr. Merritt?
Yes, thank you. I believe, uh, Mr. Craig Teal from PCPS will be joining us for this closed session as well as, I would like Director, uh, Linderman and Director Wagstaff to, to join us as well as, uh, Ben Mcfee to be there as well.
All right, very good. That's the rest of my motion.
We have, we don't have Craig yet. Okay, perhaps, uh, uh, Director Wagstaff, could you reach out to Craig?
Just up there.
Okay, here he is. All right, so we have a motion on the table to go closed. Um, are there any questions, comments, concerns regarding that? Seeing none, um, well, actually first I'll, uh, uh, explain how the public can continue, uh, on in the meeting platform so that, uh, so that you can rejoin us after we come out of our closed session. Um, so when council goes into closed meeting, attendees have two options, uh, to continue participating in the virtual council meeting. One, you may click on leave meeting button and leave the meeting, then watch the town of Olds website and Facebook page for live updates as to when the council will return. Administration will post the meeting reconvene time and the meeting attendees will be able to rejoin the virtual meeting at that point in time. Or you can stay online in the virtual meeting platform and our administration will move the meeting attendees into the waiting room. When council has finished its closed session or once council has returned, all meeting attendees in the waiting room will be brought back into the open meeting forum and we can continue in that manner. So at this point in time, I will call for the vote on the motion on the table. All in favor and opposed. And that motion is carried. So at this point in time, Mr. Fox. That's it? Wasn't a whole bunch of people in our waiting room, was there? All right, I'll call today's meeting back to order. Thank you very much, everybody, uh, for being patient, uh, with us while we have our closed session. Um, I believe we have a couple of motions coming out of that session. May I start with the first one councillor Harper?
Thank you very much, your worship. I move that council approves the transfer plan 2183 JK. All that portion of street adjoining the south boundary of lot one, block eight, plan 2183 JK and line between production southerly of the east and west boundaries of said lot one contained within plan numbered to, to be assigned by Alberta land titles in the amount of 0.115 hectares, more or less to 18456870 Alberta Limited in exchange for 0.053 hectares more or less of land from lot one, block eight, plan 2183 JK for road purposes.
Excellent, thank you very much. Councillor Overwater, a question?
I have a question, yeah. Um, well, I sort of have a problem with this more or less. Like, um, how much is more or how much is less? How much is, like, don't, shouldn't we be able to get a true reading on that?
Director Wagstaff or councillor Harper, you have the answer?
Yeah, it, it, just as a reply to that, this is how all transactions are done when it requires land and hectares or acres.
Oh, are they? Okay.
More or less. Okay, I did not know that.
Along the way that is, is not implemented, then the lawyers don't get answered.
Sad day when you don't learn something new.
Yeah, there we go. All right, any other questions, comments, concerns regarding this motion? Seeing none, I'll call the votes. All in favor and opposed. And that motion carries. Thank you very much councillor Harper and may I have the next motion, please? Uh, councillor Thompson.
Yes, your worship, I would move that council agrees to the use of lot R1, block eight, plan 2183 JK as a shared parking area with the owner of lot one, block eight, plan 2183 JK and authorizes administration to prepare and enter into an agreement for this purpose, subject to the owner of a lot agreeing to construct the parking stalls and landscape areas on lot R1 and the 57th Street Boulevard adjacent the parking area.
It's Avenue.
Over 57th Street Avenue, absolutely. 57th Avenue Boulevard adjacent the parking area. Provide ongoing annual maintenance of the parking in lot R1, including snow and ice control and all other routine maintenance. Undertake long-term replacement of the pavement surface once the useful life of the pavement has been reached as determined by the town of Olds. Provide an access easement to the town for vehicles uh, operated by the general public to enter and exit the parking stalls from lot one. Direct employee parking related to the commercial uses on lot one away from the parking stalls on lot R1 to reserve their use for customers and the general public. And the town of Olds agreeing to allow shared use of the 17 parking stalls in lot R1 and not restrict or limit parking in the 17 parking stalls in any way that prevents or limits their use by customers of the commercial uses on lot one.
Thank you very much. Um, questions, comments, concerns regarding this motion? Seeing none, I'll call the votes. All in favor and opposed. That motion carries. All right, thank you very much. I believe that brings us to the, uh, uh, to the end of our closed sessions and it looks like, uh, we have number 10 adjournment left. Um, who would like to move adjourn? Councillor Overwater.
Yes, thank you, worship. I move we adjourn, uh, 2:46.
2:46, thank you very much. Uh, any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing nine, all in favor and opposed. That makes us adjourned. Thank you very much.